... you wish to discuss and your phone number. If time permits, after scheduled speakers are through, we allow people to speak unscheduled from the floor. These portions of the meeting are not televised nor recorded. If you have questions, again, please contact the city manager's office. We have a number of proclamations and presentations to start out tonight's meeting. The first one is a Senior Awareness Month proclamation. And at this point, I'd like to ask some of the senior board members if they would like to come up to the podium while I read the proclamation. Thank you. Whereas the increasing number of seniors in Eden Prairie bring many opportunities and challenges for all components of our city, families, businesses, and government, and whereas every segment of our society is influenced by the needs, resources, and expertise of our seniors, an awareness improves participation and action. And whereas our Eden Prairie seniors play a pivotal role in formal and informal education, sharing years of accumulated experience and wisdom which will impact our future, and whereas the community wishes to celebrate and acknowledge the contributions and accomplishments of the seniors in our community and recognize the organizations that serve older adults, and whereas Senior Awareness Month recognizes that seniors are an integral part of our community, now therefore, the Eden Prairie City Council does proclaim May 2017 to be Senior Awareness Month. So congratulations, and I understand you're going to speak a bit at the podium. I'll come down with the proclamation.
Ben?
We from the Senior Center just wanted to say thank you for the support that the Senior Center receives from the city and the city council. It's an active, busy, and remember, growing group. And I just wanted to say, if Gordy Williams were here, he'd be saying, "Send more money, we need another bus."
They want to take a picture. Do you want to hold this from the center? Okay. Thank you.
The word senior has a couple of different definitions in this room tonight. When you said seniors, I think some of the high school kids were like moving forward.
I thought you were making a reference to me. Okay. The next item is a tree donation. In the spirit of Arbor Day, the Van Langendon family would like to donate $1,040 to purchase four new trees. Mr. Latthammer, I'm stealing your thunder. Go ahead.
No, thank you, Your Honor. Council members, you'll remember this from last year at this time. Same family, the Van Langendons donated trees as well, and they have been moved to do it again. These are Serbian spruce at close to 20 feet high, so four very significant trees planted in Rice Marsh Lake Park, really close to where the ones were last year. And this is a very significant part of our effort, but in addition to this, over the next two months, you will see over 100 trees being planted in city parks and on city property. So you'll see the tree spade out and active park maintenance workers planting more trees, but these certainly, as you go by Rice Marsh Lake, will not be going unnoticed, especially with the size that they are, and really, really nice trees.
I'm not familiar with their species. How does it look different from a traditional spruce?
You know, it's, originally, when I read it, I wanted to make sure that it didn't say Siberian, but it actually is Serbian, which is where it did originally propagate from. And it still is, I would say, you know, we're used to a little maybe more blue spruces that has a little more tinge to it. This is a darker green, but a similar kind of shape that actually kind of goes upwards as it grows.
Oh, great. Well, thank you. Very wonderful of the Van Langendon family. Are the Van Langendons here tonight? I don't see any. Okay. Is there a motion?
I would move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation in the amount of $1,040 from the Van Langendon family towards the purchase and planting of four Serbian spruce trees at Rice Marsh Lake Park.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And thank you to that family for that nice donation this year and last year. The next item is Human Rights Awards. And every year, we've been doing Human Rights Awards. This is a little bit different this year because instead of one, two, or three awards, we have quite a handful, more than a handful of awards to give out tonight. Ms. Quayvamaki, do you want to introduce us?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm staff liaison to the Eden Prairie Human Rights and Diversity Commission, and every year, they do present Human Rights Awards, and this is a banner year, as Mayor pointed out. Usually, we have one, two, or three. Well, now, we have seven. And one of those awards will see eight individuals awarded on that. So we have a whole, very excited room full of award recipients tonight. Each one of the Human Rights Diversity Commissioners will read a citation, and then the award winner will step aside, and Mayor, I think you will come down and hand them their awards. So I'll call up Harvey, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Harvey Humes. I'm a newly-elected commissioner for the Human Rights Diversity Commission.
Can I do the speaking in the background? Yeah, sure. I'll be there. And the camera.
Turn my back in front.
Oh.
There you go.
You could actually turn, Harvey, you could swing the mic around, and you can talk that way if you'd like.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, thank you. Again, my name is Harvey Humes. I'm a newly-elected official with the Human Rights Diversity Commission. Today, I'd like to recognize one of our first recipients as Nashim. All right. Nashim upholds the values of Eden Prairie Manifesto through her work to help Muslim school-aged students strengthen their identities and address issues they face on school playgrounds. Nashim expanded her efforts to include students of all racial and ethnic backgrounds. It is out of her concern as a mom that she has helped organize a safe haven for kids to discuss their differences and identify the things all people have in common. I'm very pleased to present you with the first award. Nashim.
I'm here to present the award for Sue Walshert, and I'm sure I butchered the name, so I'm sorry, but, so Sue upholds the values of the Eden Prairie Manifesto. I'm not going to use this. Her work with the Saturday Night Out. It's amazing how she gets children of different abilities to stay together, to work together, and proves to us that we're actually all one. There's no one that's disabled. We're all just differently-abled, and it's my honor to present the award to her today.
Hi, my name is Anne Martinka, and I have been on the commission for a year. I am presenting an award tonight to Jill Boyd, or Ms. Boyd, as we call her. Jill upholds the values of the Eden Prairie Manifesto by creating and supporting an inclusive environment for students with disabilities to enjoy the same high school rite of passage as typical students. For the past seven years, Jill has overseen a prom event which pairs up students with disabilities with typical students. With all the trappings of a prom, including a grand march, dinner, dance, and a formal attire, the students feel welcome, respected, and loved on their special night. Thank you, Jill.
My name is Shahram Nisaghi, and I am very happy and excited and honored to introduce the next award recipient, which is Patricia Fenrick. So, please, Patricia. You know, Patricia upholds the value of the Eden Prairie Manifesto by creating outreach and educational opportunities for residents, staff, and city officials to learn about the different cultures that make up our community. As the Human Rights and Diversity Commission staff liaison, Patricia planned numerous events to bring new residents together with longtime residents to promote communications and understanding. Patricia was a champion for people living with disabilities and worked hard to understand the barriers they faced and how to reduce those barriers. And again, it's my honor to introduce her. Thank you.
I'm a student commissioner, and I'm super pumped to introduce our youth award to Haley Fox. Haley Fox truly exemplifies the Eden Prairie Manifesto. Through her engagement with students with special needs, she promotes acceptance and respect. She helps these students thrive at school and encourages them to experience life like anyone else. Her care and compassion for people with special needs is undeniably sincere. Haley is a role model for her peers and for everyone around her, and she sets a high standard as to how we all should treat others.
My name is Ashlan Sentulkumar. I'm also a student commissioner on the Human Rights and Diversity Committee, and I'd like to present the next youth award recipient to Abni Nazir Narqadi. Nazir upholds the values of the Eden Prairie Manifesto by helping to give voice to those who might not otherwise feel safe or confident to speak up and engage in public discourse. As a first-generation immigrant, he has a passion for public service. Nazir possesses a remarkable sense of civic virtue and political efficacy. He has an exceptional curiosity of the inner workings of the government in the hopes that he can one day put that knowledge to use of helping others. Thank you, Nazir.
I'm Carter Rislav, and I'm presenting the youth award to the Miracle Field Boys. Trey Cavello, Bailey De Metz, Matt Dolan, Mike Espy, Logan McCarthy, Nolan Sullivan, Connor Young, and Jack Zigan. The Miracle Field Boys uphold the values of the Eden Prairie Manifesto by making sure that all young people have the opportunity to enjoy the benefits of athletics, competition, and teamwork, regardless of their disabilities. Five years ago, after watching a Miracle League game being played in another community, this group of young men decided that Eden Prairie needed its own miracle field. This group understood the importance of all children to feel included and the efforts they took to make an opportunity for all children to be able to enjoy the summertime activity of playing baseball, regardless of their abilities, shows an attitude of inclusiveness and respect.
We're going to do that downstairs. Thank you, author. Congratulations. So we'll have a cake-and-punch reception downstairs now, so if all the recipients could come downstairs. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. I'll just wait a minute until the crowd leaves. Okay, is there a motion for approval of tonight's agenda?
Second.
Any items to add or delete? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Go real slow. Talk slow. Talk slow.
Okay, is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the council workshop held Tuesday, April 18?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any corrections? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the city council meeting held the same night?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any corrections there? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Consent calendar, is there a motion? Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We have one public hearing tonight. It's the vacation of utility easement on Starring Lake First Edition. Mr. Getchel.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. There has been a request to vacate a utility easement dedicated over Lot 5, Block 2, on the plat of Starring Lake First Edition. Staff had noticed that, with this came forward, that there was not a need for this public utility easement, that in and of itself, having the easement there would create an encroachment. In fact, when the city looked at a number of other ancillary structures, auxiliary structures on other lots within the easement, we noticed that there would have been encroachments outside on other lots as well. But this really is a housekeeping item to vacate an easement that the city no longer needs, and it would not create any problems for homeowners that may have encroachments.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Getchel? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on the vacation of this easement?
Seeing none, I would move to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution vacating all the utility easement as dedicated on plat of Starring Lake First Edition over lots 1 through 7, Block 2, Hennepin County, Minnesota.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Payment of claims, is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second. Any items to question there? Hearing none, roll call, please. Councilmember Aho.
Aye.
Councilmember Butcher-Wickstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Case.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Terrell Lukens. Aye. The next item is asking for approval of a first reading of an ordinance amending City Code Section 2.05 relating to salaries of the mayor and council members. Mr. Getchel.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. At previous council planning discussions and meetings, there was a desire for the council to take a look at and evaluate any potential changes in salaries for mayor and city council and city code. It's, obviously, it's well-known that any changes that would ever be made to salaries of mayor or council would not take effect until following the next city election. The discussion for the council centered more around what some neighboring cities had done, Edina, Plymouth, and Woodbury, and that was actually indexing any future increases to those salaries to the, in this case, what's known as the compensation limit for local government officials. As that index moves each year, and for example, the proposed increase in 2017 is 1.6%, that that change could become effective with city council pay as well. So that's something that's being brought forward for consideration. The other item, and this was last altered in 2012, I believe, is the actual pay amounts. And those numbers are left blank here, because the council may choose to make an adjustment to those numbers, and then the indexing would occur at the future, or they could be, you know, kept the same, or whatever number you would approve. It is a proposed first reading, and there would need to be a second reading, so obviously, it would come back with any changes or any different amounts that you would need if you were to move forward on a first reading.
Okay, thank you. This is perhaps a question for Mr. Rosso. How is it done in conjunction with adjusted by the governor's salary? Is the governor's salary adjusted annually, or is it every four-year deal?
No, the compensation limit is adjusted annually. Actually, I had just pulled up the statute as Mr. Getchel was reading, or discussing this with you. It's based upon the percentage increase in the Consumer Price Index for the, from October of the second prior year. So they adjust it annually by that percentage, and that is the new, that arrives at a new dollar value every year. So this ordinance, we're not, I had a question from the press whether we are in danger of raising the council's salary above the salary cap.
I don't think so.
No, we're not, we're not close to that, but it was a legitimate question to ask because it referred to the salary of the governor and that increase. So we would take that exact percentage that the commissioner uses to raise the governor's cap and apply it to the increase for council salary.
So it would be an annual thing? An annual adjustment?
Would be an annual thing. And we actually have a call into some of the other communities to see if they're doing it annually, or if they're doing it every two years, because there's also the timing factor, and we have to take that into account.
Okay, given, oh.
No, you clarify.
Given how political things are at the Capitol, if we tie it into language that refers to the governor's salary increase, doesn't that, well, what happens if they decide that there's not going to be a governor's salary increase, that it's, they're not going to do it the way they have in the past? There's always a Consumer Price Index increase.
Yeah, yes.
So why don't we just talk about that in our ordinance?
Well, the statute that talks about the increase based upon the Consumer Price Index is the statute that raises the cap for municipal and governmental employees. So they would have to amend that statute to delete the annual increases in the maximum compensation that was paid to governmental or municipal employees. So if they just told the governor, "You're not going to get an increase," that would, that's something different than this.
Okay. Did you have a question, Mr. Case?
Just clarification on the two-year, one-year part of this. It can only be raised every two years because it has to be after the next election. So does the annual CPI increase accumulate, like, and we piggyback it, so like, one year it'll be 2.7%, next year's 1.6%, you add 2.7 to 1.6? Or is it 1.6 of the new amount after, it gets calculated but not given? How's that work?
The way it's written, I would add them together. The council could choose to say, "No, we're only going to use the most recent year's increase," which would require a change in the, in the language.
Which would cut it half, basically, the increase, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, to clarify to Mayor and Council with the comment the city attorney made about the salary cap, because I didn't mention this in my intro, the current annual salary of the mayor is $13,500, and city council annual pay is $10,740.
Thank you. I just have a few comments to make, because I am the one that brought this up. I think I did also in 2010, which led to the increase in 2012. But I think that increase that we had in 2012, when I started on the council in '94, I think we had one other increase between then and 2012. So it's not like we've been doing this very frequently. But we should be paying attention to this, because we should be right along with our peer cities on this. And we did have city staff draw up a document, which I think you saw at the last workshop, talking about what our peer cities and the MLC cities, what they're doing. And right now, if you look just totally at average salary, the mayor's salary is low compared to the average. The city council's salary is about the same. But there's a great range, and what we've got is we've got Bloomington, that even though there are only like 20,000 more people than the next biggest city, has about double the mayoral salary and a much bigger council salary. And then we have at the bottom, Lakeville, who, I think, for political reasons, they haven't had a salary increase since 1999, which is not the way to go. So my thinking was, if we throw out Bloomington, and we throw out Lakeville, because they're both kind of oddballs, and then we look at cities that currently have a fairly recent reassessment of their salaries. So I looked at cities that have updated their salaries within the last five years, and that would be Maple Grove, Minnetonka, Woodbury, Plymouth, Edina, and Apple Valley. And of these, three of those cities are indexed already, so they're going to be having increases. Maple Grove already is number two in the salaries, and they're looking at an increase in 2018 also. But I think these cities provide a truer average, and if you look at that, it results in a mayoral salary increase of about $800 and a council member's salary increase of about $300. We've talked about this before when we've had other meetings where we've discussed salaries, and none of us are doing this for the money. We agree. But compensation should be reasonable, and it should be somewhat commensurate with the work that is going to, is being done by all of us here. And we want to encourage other people to start doing these jobs, and we want to encourage, especially younger people, who maybe have more family commitments than we do, to do these jobs. And if you, if we're not compensating people very fairly, and they have to incur costs of babysitters, in my case, when my kids were little and I was on council, it meant my husband had to take the kids out for dinner that night, so there was a cost of that, there was transportation time. He does not cook. I hope he's listening. Many people have very demanding jobs, and time away from their jobs is an issue for them, too. And I think that if we personally feel like we don't need this salary and we don't think it's necessary, I think we have to look at who's coming behind us, and that's certainly my case, because I will not be here on the council after 2018. But we have to look at, you know, if we don't, if we don't feel we need the money, we can donate it back to the city. We can buy some more, give money for more Serbian spruce trees for Riley Lake Park. We can sponsor a bench in the park. We can donate money towards a Fourth of July event or arts in the park. I mean, if we don't feel we need that money, we can donate it. But at least there's a reasonable salary that will, that future council members will be able to reap. So my proposal would be that we raise the salaries to the average of those six cities that have most recently looked at it, eliminating Lakeville and Bloomington, and then index. So that's my proposal. Comments? Councilmember Case?
I would agree, and I don't think it takes a lot of rocket science brilliance to look at all five of us and realize that our years are somewhat numbered up here. We're not looking at 20 years on the, I hope to have 20 years of life, much less on the council. So the idea that we're really looking at the integrity of the position, and not just the integrity of a council position in our society, which I think is important, but we pride ourselves that Eden Prairie has the top police department in the state, the top fire department in the state, the 19th best city manager, I mean, sorry, the best, the top city manager, and, no. the top city manager, no, we have the top city manager in the state. We pride ourselves in our staff and really the fact that we're a number-one city. And I'm not suggesting we pay council salaries of number one, but to be number 19 or whatever, to aspire to that, that's not right either. And so there, there's the integrity of the Eden Prairie council position as well, attracting the right kind of people into this position, because all of us years are numbered and there's, you don't go too far down the road, and this whole council is filled with five new people, and I want to make sure that we survive well and healthy into the future. So I would absolutely support, you know, a small percentage of an increase every two years. That seems incredibly reasonable.
What about that adjustment for the starting point? Because my proposal is that I'm basing a salary increase based on current, mostly 2017, salary adjustments.
So what were those numbers? Can you just say 300 immediately for council, and what was it for mayor?
Exactly. It would be $14,378 for mayor, $11,054 for council.
And that would absorb the, whatever the CPI increase would be?
No. Because this is consistent for today, and we're talking already two years ahead that this would go into effect.
I just want to understand.
So these salaries would go into effect, like?
In 2019.
In 2019, 12:01 in the morning, and at 12:02 in the morning comes the CPI increase of whatever 1 percent that would be. And we're still then looking at no increase for six years.
And we're still the third or fourth on that list?
Oh, we'll still be like eighth.
Okay. I understand what you were saying, and I would support that as well.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Well, I think Mr. Aho wants to.
I mean, I guess what I was going to say was similar to what Mr. Case just said, that, you know, we had this discussion many times, and most recently, and I think we all indicated that none of us really want to do it for us. We don't, it doesn't make a difference for our lives, but I think just going forward, I think it makes sense to, to attract those younger, those younger people to, to the position, and we do want to do that. And so I think from that perspective, it makes sense, and I, and I do support this.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson?
I guess I'm sort of the sole one that isn't in favor of this. I think we make enough, and I think it's enough to cover babysitting or whatever. A council member, you know, we spend a lot more time than just what's here between committees and constituent work and such. We're never going to be paid in commensurate with the time it takes for this or for anyone. I think anyone who's running for this has to be willing, you know, to spend the 20 hours a week or whatever it takes. So I guess I won't be voting in favor.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a motion?
Yes, I would like to move to approve the first reading of the ordinance amending City Code Section 2.05 relating to salaries of the mayor and council members. And the salary increase for mayor would be $14,378. The salary increase for city council members would be $11,054.
Not the increase.
Don't say increase.
The total.
The salary would be.
The salary.
Salary would be. Oh, excuse me, pardon me. And then that would take place in 2019, and then also in 2019, there would be a CPI increase.
Right. Based on the previous one year, right? Okay. All right, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Next item is reports of council members, and do you want to start? Let's see. Oh, why is this under reports of council members?
I thought of that, too, but it's.
Typically, appointments fall under council. It could have been under appointments as well, but I can kind of lead this off.
Okay, thank you.
I'll lead this off, yeah. The, we have two water, three watershed districts in our community, and it's been a goal, the council, for the last few years to, you know, play a more influential role in the support of or the bringing forth of potential candidates to the Board of Managers to watershed districts who are appointed by county board. In our case, you know, most of the positions, all the positions for our residents would be head-up in county board, but some of the districts cross different county boundaries. So other counties do do appointments for their members. Last year, you may recall, a resolution of support that you did as a city council for an individual for the Riley Purgatory Bluff Creek watershed district. And then tonight, we're coming with a couple different proposals, and we'll start with the first, which is a recommendation of appointment of a resident, Mark Brown, to be a board, Board of Managers on the Lower Minnesota River watershed district. So we have a resident that's expressed interest in, in that smaller district and kind of that southern part of Eden Prairie, a smaller portion of Eden Prairie. It's probably of the three watershed districts, covers the least amount of area, but it is the Minnesota River area. So it's a very important area as well. So that, that's the first report, dealing with support for a resident for that position. As it relates to, and then you can take these actions separately, but I'll cover them both right now. As it relates to the Riley Purgatory Bluff Creek watershed district, I mentioned last year, the council expressed support for a candidate. That was Peter Iverson. He's back again this year. There are two openings. Last year, there was one opening on the board. This year, there are two openings on the board. It's a five-member board, and we have six people that have expressed interest, six residents that have expressed interest in applying for this position to be interviewed by the county board and appointed by the county board. So this resolution of support, we would ask that you pick a minimum of at least three, and obviously you can go up to as many as you like. And the resolution has two different numbers, and that's because the county's asking for a list for the first position, the second position, and the recommendation is a list is identical. So the same group of people you as a council would support for both of those positions, whatever that, that group is. So then we have the six residents expressing interest in that position on Riley Purgatory Bluff Creek watershed.
Thank you. Any questions for staff before we start? Okay, is there a motion on the first one, the Lower Minnesota River?
I'll move to adopt a resolution recommending the appointment of Mark Brown to the vacant term on the Board of Managers for the Lower Minnesota River watershed district.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. The next item is the Riley Purgatory Bluff Creek watershed district. So we have six candidates that have expressed interest. We can recommend zero to six, right?
Yeah, theoretically, yeah, that's right.
By doing this list, just as a reminder, it ties the hands of the county board. If they're going to, to elect anybody from Eden Prairie, they have to be on this list that we give them. Right now, as you know, we have about, what, 60 percent of the watershed is Eden Prairie, and we have one Eden Prairie representative. So personally, my goal is to have as many people on this list for them to choose from as possible. I know from conversations I've had with at least one of the county commissioners, they don't particularly like the fact that we're even doing this. So I guess I would prefer to put all six nominees on our list for both the first and the second term. Councilmember Nelson?
I guess I was going to suggest that we do four, which is two names, basically, for the two positions, but all four for each. But it's, I guess I would like to see some changes on the board and some people that have expressed definite interest in Eden Prairie water and lakes and streams and wet, you know, watershed, wetlands, and also looking at what the city does and, you know, being aware of that. So I guess my preference might be four rather than six.
Okay, any other comments? Yes?
I guess I would like to see some changes on the board as well. I think we've had, you know, we've had a number of people that have served for a long time, and I give them kudos for, for their length of service and appreciate all that they've done, but I think it's always good to get some, some change, and I'm open to change. I think we could do four or, or maybe five.
Well, does somebody want to make a motion?
I don't know. You look like you're about to.
No, I was reading, but go, go ahead if you wish.
I guess I would nominate that Jim Brackey, Paul Bulger, John Kirk, and Dick Ward be put on the list. It's my understanding that both other individuals have had an opportunity to go before the board in the past.
They have not had an opportunity?
No, they have had.
Okay. Well, and I think if I remember correctly, Pete Iverson went before the board last time because he was one of the people we suggested, correct?
Correct.
But they chose, yeah, but they chose to go with the incumbent.
Correct.
So, I mean, I don't think that's like a rejection of Pete Iverson.
Well, I could go to five to include him, but I would be comfortable with just four.
I guess I would propose that we do five and include Pete Iverson.
Does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make that motion. I would propose that we, now, that we put the names forward of Jim Brackey, Paul Bulger, Pete Iverson, John Kirk, and Dick Ward.
And I'll retract my motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Okay, so the motion passes. Thank you. Report of city manager, backyard chickens are back.
Yes, Mayor and Council, backyard chickens are back. You may recall at the March council meeting, I believe it was the second meeting in March, that we received the results of our quality of life survey. And at that time, one of the, the questions related to the desire to see backyard chickens allowed in Eden Prairie. I guess it's a technicality because they are allowed on rural, rurally zoned lots at Eden Prairie, but they're not allowed on residential lots in Eden Prairie. And there's been some discussion that actually dates back to a petition that you received in 2015 from a group of residents that would like to see the city council adopt an ordinance allowing chickens in Eden Prairie. And at that time, you asked staff to do some research into surrounding cities that allow backyard chickens, and you received that report near the end of 2015, which then led to your direction to staff that we survey our residents, and we received the results of that survey. And then council at that meeting in March requested that city staff refresh that report in terms of backyard chickens. So we don't have any action tonight requested. We don't have a first reading of an ordinance before you. It's simply a report on the current status of backyard chickens in, I would say, the southwest metro. And Jim Shadine, our zoning administrator, is here for a brief presentation to bring you up to speed on that report. And then staff can certainly take any direction that the council would have regarding drafting an ordinance or certain conditions you might want to see. But as you know, we're at, we're at that point right now where, at the request of the council, we're simply coming back with some updated information on backyard chickens.
Thank you.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Thanks for having me. As the city manager explained, I'm giving you a refresh on the information that I provided in October of 2015. I didn't delve too deeply into the particular details of each of the city's ordinances. Rather, I focused on two main questions. One was we wanted to find out if cities tracked the people in their, cities tracked chicken owners. And the second question would be if they had encountered any problems. If so, what were those problems, and how were the problems resolved? So the 2016 Quality of Life Survey asked the citizens of Eden Prairie that they were considering changing current regulations to allow residents with a single-family home and a yard to have up to three chickens, excluding roosters. And the question was, to what extent would you support or oppose this? And with plus or minus of a couple points. Oh, thank you. Roughly 60 percent either strongly or somewhat supported it, and roughly 40 percent either strongly or somewhat opposed it. So again, the cities that I queried were our five neighbors, and then five additional cities that roughly fell into the similar demographic as Eden Prairie. So the data that you have here is not new to you. Of the 10 cities that I queried, seven allow chicken keeping, three don't, and as you can see, two allow it only in agricultural districts. The next question I asked were if roosters were allowed, and in every instance, I was told no, and which usually elicited, elicited a response of, but we allow X amount of hens. Or in the case of Edina, they allow up to 18 chicks for educational purposes. So as you can see, only one city, Eagan, has a registration permitting or licensing program. And so the next question focused on what issues cities have encountered. So, and the three main ones focus on at-large noise and odor. As you can see in the far column, slaughtering complaints are nonexistent. So most cities don't allow slaughtering in the first place. But I can get into these issues in detail. Most cities reported zero to, zero to two instances per year. And to put that into perspective, I asked our Eden Prairie Animal Control Officer to provide me with.
Tim, could you speak into the mic? Just move it over.
I'm sorry.
Just slide, there you go.
I'm not used to hearing my voice this loud, so it's a little unnerving. But 379 reports of dogs at large last year, 80 reports of cats at large, and keep in mind, that's the reports. It doesn't necessarily mean that's how many we caught. But interestingly, and as a side note, I asked our Animal Control Officer of the dogs that we had actually taken into custody, how many of those were licensed? What percentage? Around 25 to 30 percent. So about 70 percent of the dogs that we physically capture aren't actually licensed, we find out.
Are not licensed.
Not licensed, yep. Usually, the dogs and the cats are chipped, so we're, we're able to return them to their owners pretty easily. And in the cases that we were not, we'll get into what we would do if we were to find a chicken at large. So feces and odor, only one city responded that they've ever had any issue with it. That was Minnetonka. Two reports in 17 years, which is, I think, a pretty good track record. And I was assured that those issues were resolved pretty quickly. Noise, that comes back to the question of roosters. That's why nobody allows roosters, because they crow. So you'll notice, if I back up here, there were two cities, Minnetonka and Bloomington, that had some noise issues, and that is a result of improperly sexed chicks. And basically, what happens when you want chickens, you order a pack of little babies, and you can flip them over and look, but they're so tiny that sometimes it's difficult to tell. So you may have a henrietta chicken that eventually grows into henry and starts crowing. And in those instances, which are very rare, you'd have to get rid of the chicken. And the two cities that have experienced that both said it really wasn't an issue. The owners were really understanding. They understood that the rules are there for a reason, so they just replaced it with another chick. Impounding, so what do we do if we do catch a chicken? It's really, it's, it's an interesting question because it doesn't really happen that often. Chickens really aren't at-large. And when I was sitting over there this evening, I sat down to, next to a gentleman, I had no idea who he was, and he asked me why I was here. He said, oh, no kidding, I'm from Minnetonka. I raise chickens. So I said, wow, what, what do you do if your chickens get out? And he said, well, number one, they don't, and if they do, they stay really close to the coop for safety and for food. They don't want to stray far away at all because once that sun goes down, they want to get back to that coop. Or else owls, fox, coyotes, your pet goes bye-bye. So, and that's what I found in pulling the cities, is that it's so infrequent, and I guess that plays back to the, if you put it into perspective with the dog. perspective with the dogs and the cats, one or two chickens per year barely registers. It's a blip on the radar. So, I only experienced one city where they had one or two instances where they weren't able to return the chicken to the owner. That was Bloomington. And in that case, they were fortunate enough to have a staff member who had a hobby farm, so relocated. Tracking, I think it was, I think it was Eagan? Eagan is the only city I encountered that tracked their owners, which I found interesting. But the more I looked at it, the more it made sense. The issues that they encounter are so few and far between that to devote staff time to licensing, inspecting, registering, fees. I think they all agreed that it wasn't worth the staff effort to do that. The Eagan Animal Control Officer even confided in me, and I probably shouldn't say this because it's being broadcast. Maybe his boss doesn't want to know, but he thought that their registration program was a little over the top. It's a $50 application fee. Then it needs to be approved by the city. Then the location is inspected by Animal Control. Then the go-ahead is given. And then annually, the owner needs to submit another $50 and be re-inspected all over again. And their Animal Control Officer felt that that was a little bit over the top. So, as I mentioned, slaughtering, not an issue. I think the Bloomington Animal Control Officer said it best. It's not an issue until it becomes an issue. But he pointed out, and it's interesting because Eden Prairie is one of the few suburbs that still has the room to allow hunting. So, if you're familiar, we do allow hunting in the Minnesota River bottoms. And when you take an animal, whether it be a deer, a pheasant, or a duck, you either dress the animal in the field, or you bring it home, and you dress it in your garage. And I know hunters sometimes will do that with deer, and even fishermen will bring home a stringer of fish and do that right in there. So, his feeling was, it's probably happening. We're not aware of it, and it's really not an issue until it becomes an issue. So, this is probably the shortest presentation I've given. So, I'm open to questions. Again, I want to stress, I didn't do a deep dive into the real nitty-gritty details of particular ordinances. But I think I have a general feeling of what's out there and what's available. So, if you have questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them. If I don't have the answer, I'll get that info for you.
And one thing to add quickly, Mayor and Council, because I think this is put in the memo, and I think this question was asked previously, is any property value impacts? And there isn't any city that has chickens that's done any kind of measuring or monitoring of property values or change in property values due to, you know, chickens or where chickens are raised, and it's not necessarily seen as an issue.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Nelson?
I've got a couple of questions. Do the other cities insist that, you know, chickens have some kind of fencing that would allow them, you know, expectation to stay in the yard? I know that Chanhasan doesn't allow them, but I know of at least one family over there where the chickens play in the front yard and go for walks with the family, which is sort of cute. But generally, do they say that, you know, they have some kind of fencing to encourage the chickens to stay in, even if you say they don't go too far away? What's the situation?
Yep, that's been my experiences almost without exception. The cities require a coop of a certain size and setback from the property line and a chicken run that needs to be enclosed. And in a lot of cases, even with netting over the top to prevent owls, hawks, eagles, other predators. And in most instances, I've found that the coop, we call it backyard chickens, it's contained in the backyards. There's a few cities that will allow it inside yards, none that I've found that it would allow it in a front yard.
So, if we did one, we would do, I assume, backyards with some fencing and some, hopefully, some protection from predators.
Correct.
And I noticed one had a how large a yard? Are we talking about any home? And which case, what about attached, like townhouses, that they each have their own little patio yard? Would they be allowed to have chickens, or is this homes on a certain sized yard, or, you know, can apartment owners have them on their deck?
Well, obviously, that decision would be up to you. But what I've found is that in most instances, it's limited. Kind of like that question in the Quality of Life Survey to single-family dwellings. And when you start talking about setback regulations and requirements, Bloomington's is probably the most restrictive. 100 feet.
That'd be a big yard then.
So, you need a 200-foot wide lot in Bloomington's case. And so, they've limited that to probably mainly the west side of Bloomington. So, there's means and methods to address that. If you wanted to limit the size, you could do it either through-
But at least it's not done with townhouses then, or something that have a very small backyard, let's say.
Yeah, you could write that into the code, that it would be for single-family dwellings only, not multiple-family dwellings or townhomes, quadplexes, apartment buildings. I need to mention, I know of at least two places of worship in Eden Prairie that have apiaries. One has a garden. I would wonder if any of those places might be interested in having chickens. But other cities say, single-family dwelling only. I'm sorry, if you're not that, then you can't have chickens. So, again, it's your decision. You can write it whichever way you'd prefer.
So, there is, most of them do limit to single-family homes with at least a little bit 10-foot setback or something from their yard.
And I think it makes sense. When people are in such tight quarters, you're not really giving the people who don't want chickens a chance to kind of escape the chickens.
Yes.
So.
And a number of people that have come in early on, I've met with several of them on chickens. And a couple of them have said they want them because they want their children to see the whole life cycle of animals, including slaughtering and eating them. And I can see other families that might, in the neighborhood, that might have children that are quite fond of said chickens, because you often are fond of the next-door neighbor's dog or cat, or chickens would be interesting, that might be very traumatized by watching them slaughter Fluffy. So, how do they handle, you know, you said slaughter hasn't been an issue, but do they ever say slaughter has to be done by a butcher? Or they just don't talk about it and hope that it's done properly, or they all assume that all chickens die a natural death?
Well, most of the cities so far, and like I said, I didn't do a deep dive into it, but the ordinances I've read, the majority of them prohibit slaughtering.
So, you can do that. So, some of the people that want them might, if they were going to have them slaughtered, they'd have to go to a butcher.
Correct.
And do it through that. I think that might be easier in some neighborhoods that had many small children, perhaps.
Councilmember Butcher.
Wixstrom.
Yes, sir.
That's okay. No, I know who I am. So, well, I think everyone knows that I am a fan of having chickens in Eden Prairie. And I was really pleased to see the survey sort of bears out what I'd been expecting in terms of the number of people who were concerned about chickens. I do have one question, though. So, I would imagine chickens who are on farms, you know, in agricultural areas, and they're in larger chicken homes, not coops, I mean larger. So, there's no worry about them during the winter, wintering in a small coop that would hold four chickens, is there?
Not that I've found. I've seen ordinances that have language in there that says you have to provide for the chickens in the winter, whether it be providing a heating lamp or insulation. Speaking personally, my sister lives in Minneapolis. She has a rent-a-chicken. Farmer shows up in the spring with the coop and the chickens. They play with the chickens. They eat the eggs. And then fall comes along, and Farmer Joe comes out, and away they go.
Yeah, it is good.
Well, you know, I think that there are lots of reasons why people want to have chickens. I mean, as pets is one, therapeutic is another. But, you know, we allow lots of different kinds of pets, exotic birds and ferrets and all sorts of things. I think that that's sort of a personal choice. I guess one of the other things, you know, when you brought up faith communities might want to have something like a chicken coop or something like that, should we allow that? I was thinking, what about schools? I mean, I would imagine that would be an experience that schools might be interested in. So, anyway, just something for us to think about. But I think it's great. I would love to see Eden Prairie have chickens.
Mr. Case?
So, just as a reminder to me, but to anyone listening as well, restating the obvious for all of us is that all we're doing tonight is, well, maybe nothing, but at the very minimum, or the maximum, deciding to direct staff to bring us back an ordinance, just to go that next step to say, okay, we're ready at least to look at something now. And Rick did not want to do that previously because it would be dedicating staff time to something that, if he didn't have three or four votes up here, that would be a waste of time. And so, I think staff is looking for direction. Do we have consensus among us to ask staff to bring something back, which could be voted up or down? I think that's kind of where we're at. And I feel like we've come to the point personally that the obstacles have been removed. You know, if we were the first city looking at this, and we were thinking, you know, we're a suburban city, we're like Minnetonka, Edina, and we're the very first to go out and have chickens, and we don't have a lot of history of anybody else trying it, that would be not just scary, but maybe not even a great idea. Because we wouldn't have any experience to know if it would work or not. But we're at the end of the train here. I mean, every one of our neighbors, in fact, if you count the Chanhasan has, they're the only ones that don't allow chickens technically, but they have the most rural land of anybody. So, in a way, you could argue, every one of our neighbors on some level permits chickens, except us. Every one. And the ones around us, you look at Edina, Minnetonka, these are comparable neighbors of attracting the type of people into the city that we want to attract. So, clearly, it works. And then, so Jim goes out and checks out, hey, any issues and problems any of you have encountered? Basically, no, none. And so, anytime we have a rule change like this, you know, we as a council try to balance the freedom for individual landowners, you know, do we want that freedom? We have all these other freedoms, to own dogs and cats and whatever. And then, how do we balance that with the impact on others around us? So, it seems like the freedom piece is clear that our neighbors have gone that path. And the impact on neighbors, I think, is pretty clear that there really isn't one. So, I would, to Kathy's point, I think, I think if we want to go down that path, we could just say, staff, go out and do your best study and bring us back the best of the best of the best that you can do and trust. Or we can say, just make sure, obviously, no roosters. Make sure that, you know, that at least it's in single-family homes. Make sure at least there's 10-foot setbacks. But I'm assuming staff knows all that. They've heard us, you know, talk about that. They've studied other cities. I think there's some obvious things. And if they come back and it's too cumbersome, if they say something that they want these permits and checked every year, and we go, you know, I liked what you said, Jim, that, I mean, in general, all of our city ordinances operate on complaint base, basically. And we do that now with so many things. We set a rule, and then we let it go until we get the complaint. Now, we have the rule to go get it. And we didn't even have a cat ordinance until 95, I think. That, up to that point, any cat could wander. And then we set this rule, but we don't go off looking for wild cats. But now, we have the law that allows the cats, if, as you remember, my cat was the first cat arrested in the city of Eden Prairie. He was, Pickle. But it allows cats now to be arrested. So, the point is, we-
They're not arrested.
He was, yeah. We had to go get him out of jail in Bloomington. But that's a whole nother story. The point is, I think we're ready to, I feel that we're ready. We don't even need a vote. I was kind of checking with Rick, unless you want it. But I just, I think he wants to know what's a consensus up here. Do we have a sense that he can walk away and, again, not waste staff's time? So, I'm going to weigh in here heavily. I say it's time. Let's build an ordinance, bring it back to us, and then give us an up or down vote chance.
Councilmember Aho?
I guess my input on this issue is that if you look at the survey results, we have 30, or 25% strongly oppose it, and 17 somewhat oppose it. So, that's, you know, still 42% that are opposed. So, I wouldn't say that necessarily that there's an overwhelming input that people want to have backyard chickens. It's still pretty split, I would say, almost evenly. And so, I think there are some areas that are appropriate, and I think there's a lot of areas that are inappropriate to have chickens. And, you know, the hardest part of all this is, if we come up with an ordinance, is how are we going to allow them in areas that are appropriate? How are we going to write that ordinance such that it allows them where it makes sense, and it doesn't allow them where it doesn't make sense, and be fair and balanced to everyone in the community? And I think that's going to be the struggle. And then, I just, I don't want to put overburden on our staff that they have to be, you know, trying to manage this. I don't want to have any kind of a fee structure or a licensing or anything like that. But I do want to make it such, if we do go ahead with something like this, I'd want to make it so that it's pretty clear and definite of where we would allow chickens, only where it makes sense. But I think it makes it a little bit difficult in writing that ordinance to accomplish that. So, that's my concern.
Councilmember Butcher-Wixstrom?
Yeah, I just have one more question. Do we allow rabbits in Eden Prairie?
I believe we do.
Yeah. I kind of thought we did.
Just not male rabbits that howl.
Yeah. That make a lot of noise. But you might not know that right away. Anyway, I do appreciate what you have to say. I do think that the staff, given that there are other cities who have forayed into this, could find language that they could bring back to us that we could review. Yeah.
Councilmember Case?
Yeah, I just wanted, I appreciate what Brad said, and I just wanted to underscore, to your point of, how do we make sure that we do it right? We look at our neighbors. I mean, they've done it, you know, and the evidence has come back that they did it right because they're not getting all the complaints. So, I think it's doable. I mean, I just think it's out there now. Others are doing it. We're not the first. We're the last. I don't want to be the only city of everyone around us that doesn't do something that seems logical and normal and makes sense. That's my piece. And I agree with you. There's not an overwhelming, we're not talking thousands of people that want chickens. In fact, I think it was Bloomington that said, what, only 10 or 12? I mean, I'm anticipating literally, we'll probably have a dozen people in that first year, maybe in the second, third. It's just not a big deal. But that's the whole point, too. It's just not a big deal. And it allows those families that want to be able to have chickens and raise them. It just allows it. And I think that's a good thing for a city to do.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, I agree. It's worth time. Look at the others. You know, I do have the questions about, you know, some kind of fencing to keep them in or in a coop, and how large a yard. And also, you know, it sounds like other cities don't allow you to dispose of them extremely publicly, at least. And I share this thing of, yeah, how do you keep the animal safety in, you know, 20 below zero? Do they have some method for doing that? Though I assume some of these professionally-done coops must have some way of doing that. Or maybe it's, everybody does the rent-a-chicken. I hadn't heard of that before, but they take, you know. That sounds cute. Maybe it's-
Could I add something?
Yeah.
Just a quick comment. I read code a lot. I interpret code a lot. Code is my life. And one of the things that struck me, reading through some of these, is is that they really were written, in my view, to protect the adjacent property owners. I mean, when I'm reading through these codes, I'm like, wow, they're really putting the screws to the chicken owners because they're writing these codes in a way that protects the neighbors from having to deal with chickens if they don't want to deal with them. I just got that feeling reading through codes. And so, I'm sure we can come up with something that's going to be acceptable to everyone.
I wanted to say a few things. I'm softening on this issue. I agree with you, Brad. The data is kind of equivocal as to whether or not there's this overwhelming group of people that think chickens are a great idea, or whether they're not. But when I look at issues like at- But when I look at issues like at-large, how much of a hassle is this for our police staff or whoever's going to animal control with maybe two chickens at large per year when we have 379 dogs and 80 cats? Well, yeah, but we probably have 2,000, 3,000, 4,000 dogs in the community. So yeah, you'd think the percent, you'd have more stray dogs. These communities that have two instances of chickens at large per year, how many people do they have that are actually raising chickens? I mean, if it's eight different families and they've got two stray chickens, that's a 25% problem rate. Granted, it's not a lot of time for staff, regardless. It's not a lot of time for staff. If we're going to do this, I think we have to have some really clear-cut information on where you can build a chicken coop and a chicken run. And you referenced that, that a lot of these ordinances or codes are protective of the neighbors, and I think that's really important. If the chicken coops are such lovely, nice things, why stick them out in the corner of your yard where you don't have to look at them? Put them right in your backyard underneath your deck or someplace close. And you're responsible for keeping it looking nice. And then we have a lot of places in Eden Prairie where, because of corner lots, somebody's backyard is right in somebody else's front yard. And that would not be an appropriate place for that neighbor to have chickens if it's in the front yard of another house. So I think we need to look at things like that. Some of the sample plans that some of these chicken advocates gave us are fine. They would be great. They showed chicken runs and chicken coops right up close to the house, heavily landscaped. You know, that's fine. But I think we need to, like you said, be very protective of the neighbors. Unlike some of the other people that have spoken, I do think that we should have chicken owners register, if for no other reason than that we can give them information about where is an appropriate place for them to place their chicken coop. And then also, we know who has chickens. I mean, if we do end up, and I'm not saying we will, but if we do end up with somebody who repeatedly gets mail checks and is reluctant to get rid of the chicken, what bargaining chip do we have, other than to say, "We're pulling your license"? I mean, if we're talking about eight families, 12 families, 15 families getting chickens, that's not going to contribute very much to staff time in terms of registering or licensing. I don't, I'm not saying we need to go out and inspect everything, but I bet George would like to inspect if they're going to put a heating lamp inside the chicken coop. I think he would be very interested in that. So I think we need to know where these are. And I think the only way to do that is by registering or licensing, whatever the terminology might be for that. So that's all I have to say. So I think you're getting a sense that the direction of the council is, let's pursue this further and try to write an ordinance.
Yes, Mayor. And then maybe to weigh in on a recent move you made, at least within the last five years, was allowing bees in apiaries. And you did, we called it registration. We didn't call it licensing and annual fees. But we have a registration program. And a lot of that, there are allergy issues sometimes associated with bees. But that was mainly to alert others in the neighborhood as well that someone was going to have an apiary. And we were able to give you stats then on how many apiaries are in the city. So through a registration program, you know, you would know, you know, you would have an estimate of how many people are caring for chickens. And it still would be, you know, would be, I don't think we would want to annually inspect necessarily anything, but you would have, you know, some simple registration material and some information.
And to have some clout, to be able to say, "No, you're losing your registration because you haven't been cleaning up. It's smelly. The neighbors are complaining."
Right.
If we don't have that, we have no, how do we?
No enforcement.
No enforcement.
So yes, I would take this as direction, that you're moving ahead to consider an ordinance to allow backyard chickens. And as you know, with all of our ordinances, it's, you know, two readings, and we haven't even had our first reading. So we will come back with something.
Yeah, it would be nice to have some safety information that's handed with every registration, because it can be a problem if people are doing sort of stupid stuff, you know, that could cause fire stuff or whatever. You know, you get too much chicken poop, and I think it is a bit flammable. So it is with most animals, too much together, so.
Okay. So we will go ahead. And we don't need a motion, we're just giving staff direction. Next item, it says, "Performance Measurement Program." Is that a mistake?
No, that's correct, Mayor. We have a brief presentation for you, last item of the night, or last item of the night in the open meeting. The, as you know, we receive results on our survey. We talked about that for City Services as it related to the chicken question. But we also, obviously, as you know, provide a wide array of City Services. And we think we do a good job of delivering those services. But sometimes you really don't know the job you're doing on service delivery unless you have the analytics and you have the numbers. So an area that we feel is important to the delivery of local government services to measure and track our progress. And so tonight, Aurora Jaeger is here, our administration intern, to provide you with a new tool that we have, a new performance measurement dashboard that we're unveiling tonight. And we have a brief presentation and an overview on our new performance measurement dashboard.
Thanks, Rick. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Like Rick said, we're unveiling an update to our performance measurement dashboard. And you might remember, in 2013, you were presented at a council workshop, the original performance measurement dashboard. And that presented measures related to the six areas of the Eden Prairie Promise. And that's been housed on our website ever since then. But in 2016, we felt it was time to really update the data and expand the capability of that dashboard. So we went through a process of looking at how we could create a new public-facing dashboard, as well as spend a great deal of time meeting as staff to discuss what measures would be meaningful to report to the public, and are we missing anything that we were currently reporting? So staff looked through hundreds of measures from things that we were tracking internally, as well as data that we gather through our Quality of Life Survey, to really drill down to the meaningful measures. And we've selected about 60 that are put in this dashboard in front of you. So just to give you a brief overview of what's on this dashboard, first you'll see that there's just a brief description of what this dashboard is for, its relation to the Eden Prairie Promise, and a statement of the city's vision, mission, and goals. And like before, all of the measures are categorized under the six goals of the Eden Prairie Promise. So anyone looking up any measures would look under these six categories. So for example, if we were interested in exploring something related to innovative and sustainable practices, you could click on that goal, see a brief description of the goal, and any measures related to that goal area. To give you an example of what a measure would look like, let's look at annual water production. What we had previously on our dashboard was this. We had a graph that showed the data over time. But what we've been able to do with this new dashboard is to add extra information that gives greater context and improves the quality of data on our website. So you'll see that we've added a definition, to be sure that we're really clear with this is exactly what we're measuring, as well as, towards the bottom, we've added a section for analysis, an explanation of why this is important, and source. We felt that it was important to contextualize the data and describe, you know, you can see the trend over time, but what does that mean? Is increasing or decreasing, good or bad? As well as, we thought that it was important to explain the importance of these measures, to explain why it is that the city is tracking them, and why residents might find them meaningful as well. And finally, what I think is very important is this addition of source information. So if people are going to this dashboard to look at how their city is performing, we think it's important that they also be connected with other resources that the city has to offer. So if someone was looking at annual water production, for example, they might be interested in clicking this link and being directed to our city website, under our Sustainable Eden Prairie page, to learn more about water, so they could easily access any information about stormwater, about water conservation rebates, really trying to make the ease of information a lot better, so that we were educating our residents and keeping them engaged. To give you an example of some of the data we have related to the Quality of Life Survey, I'll pull up a measure for community well-being and safety. Similar to before, it has a description of the goal and many of the measures related to it. As an example, I'll pull up our ratings of police department services. So again, just as before, it has a definition, it has the chart that shows our ratings over time. But what's different with measures related to the Quality of Life Survey is we have benchmarking data. So you might remember when we had that presentation, they talked about how we compared to national, state, and regional benchmarks. And we felt that it was important to include that information as well. You know, we see that we ranked 94% satisfaction in 2016, but, which we think is good, but how good is it? And so in this case, we see that we're actually higher than national, state, and regional benchmarks. And so that's good, and we want to celebrate that. And again, if you scroll down to the very bottom, you'll see that it connects to the Quality of Life Survey data. So if someone was interested in learning more about the survey, they could access the full report and see the presentation as well, just one quick away. So just a way to make it easy for residents to access more information about the city. I will say that this is kind of the phase one of the update to the dashboard. So first, we wanted to add, you know, all this extra information about the definition and analysis. But what we're looking for in the future is to be able to add benchmarks to all of our measures. And to give you an idea of what that would look like, I'll show you one measure in particular that we've already done this for. So if you look at annual water loss, we've set a target for having water loss at or below 10%. So you can easily see, when we place a target, how we're performing objectively. Are we meeting our goals? Are we performing as we expected that we would? And so our goal is to be able to establish this for all of our measures in the future and be able to rate ourselves kind of like a scorecard, to say that we are meeting or exceeding our expectations, or if we're failing to meet some of our expectations. So just a way to keep ourselves accountable to the public, but make that information easily accessible over time. And I think that this is a great way for us to uphold our accountability and keep us transparent. But like I said, there's a lot of information on this website, and I have only covered just a few. So I encourage you to look through this. Like I said, there's over 60 measures. Explore these different goal areas. You know, look through the menu, see any measures that you're interested in and learn more about them. Just to highlight where they are on our website, if you go to the Eden Prairie homepage under City Government, Open Government, we have the Eden Prairie Promise dashboard. You click that link, it'll open you right up to the dashboard to access all of that information. So I think it's going to be a great tool that hopefully residents will find meaningful. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. This looks really good. I love the way it links into other documents and other information that we have on the website. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
I do have one. Can you search for this on the search function? I know of various things I've tried to search. Sometimes they come up, sometimes they disturbingly don't. But, so if someone doesn't know, to go look on this one link, if they would, you know, click one of the types of things, you know, say water use or something, would it actually lead them to it?
Yeah, exactly. So they can search it in the search function as well as, we're going to be pushing this out promotional-wise tomorrow. And we'll be releasing news releases to let residents know that this tool is available, and that'll provide them direct links to access it easily as well.
Wonderful.
Will there be a direct link right on the homepage to the dashboard? I would say, you know, it's nice that it's there, you can navigate to it through the menu system, but especially when people are not used to it being there, I think it might be nice to highlight it right on the homepage.
Right. And anytime we release a news item, it'll show up right here on the homepage, right there. So it'll show up right in the center.
Excellent. Thank you. Looks great.
Councilmember Wixstrom.
Yeah, Aurora, I just wanted to say, I think this is a great job, and it's a wonderful way to manage and make relevant a lot of data and get it into the hands of people. I think this is terrific. Thank you.
Thank you, Aurora.
Thank you.
All right. Let me find my agenda here. The next item is, we're going to adjourn, are we going to adjourn into closed session?
We're not adjourning. We're going to move into closed session.
We're going to move into closed session for the city manager's performance review. And are we going to come back in here and then?
No, we will adjourn the meeting from closed session. We won't be coming back in.
All right. Okay, so we will now end this portion of the meeting and go into closed session.
That's great.
Thank you.
[inaudible]
Yeah.